Which will act as an easement to the lease area. This is represented in the dashed black line. And here's a close up. The applicant also plans to construct a three hundred and twenty foot tall cell tower. This tower may be reviewed again administratively if it meets the requirements. Section eleven dash three oh one, paragraph two states that new towers may be subjective to administrative review if one of the following conditions are satisfied. A, that there are no residences within four hundred feet plus the height of the tower, or B, that all owners of said residences or the landowners upon which the residences are located have consented in writing to the construction of the tower. So four hundred feet plus the height of the tower is seven hundred and twenty feet, which is represented here in the pink circle. There are two residences within that. They are both owned by the same property owner. Section eleven dash three oh six states that all towers shall be set back from the nearest edge of all roads by at least twenty feet plus the height of the tower. That equals three hundred and forty feet. So the road is approximately five hundred and fifty-four feet away from the tower and is approximately seven hundred and nine feet away from the project entrance. Represented here by the blue lines. On December third, staff conducted a site visit. This is the area where the tower will be installed and due to gates and long driveways, we decided it would be safer just to kind of stick along the side of the road. Here's the site distance, one way, and here's the other. They were very adequate. The land is flat in that area. Staff did not notice anything of concern or alarm while at the site. On November twenty-seventh, we mailed a total of ten notifications to property owners within three hundred feet of the subject parcel. To date, we received only two comments in opposition of the project. Both state they would be able to see the tower from their properties and that they moved away from the city to be free of nearby towers and lights. One stated that a favorite activity of theirs with their children, stargazing at night, the installation of a cell tower would avert attention from the stars and to the lights of the tower. Had they known that there would eventually be a tower nearby, they probably would not have purchased this property. And copies of those emails are in your update packets. At this time, staff would like to recommend approval of this project with the following conditions, and these conditions are the same as what was in your staff report sent to you last week. Any questions?
Questions of staff? Okay, we're onto the Morrow Communication Tower. If anyone in here is, would like to address it, like I say, just come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name's Michelle Skogen and my husband-
I'm Mark Skogen. We border this property where the proposed tower is going to go in. And aesthetically, we're the ones that said about stargazing, but, you know, I work in Lincoln for Blackco, and Bob knows where that is. And we have a tower on our property, and it's a twelve mile drive to my house out, now it's K and L address, but you drive through Morrow. And, you know, I have no stop signs, no lights, so literally twelve miles, and I'm home with no lights, you know, no stop signs, very rural, you know, Bob knows that area, you know, no one farm out there. And I just, you know, if you look at the top of Hale Mountain, there's plenty of properties that are, you know, large properties, you know, hundred acres, nothing but cattle, flat land, no houses around. So I just question whether they did their due diligence that a place within so many residents, it's like the most populated corner of Hale Mountain, you know, on top of it, did they do due diligence to find a hundred acre parcel or bigger one, such as the one you just approved in the Munnion one? So that was a Hale property, and it was a hundred and five acre track. The tower's going in there, and it's really not close to any houses. So I agree, you know, we need cell towers, you can't stop growth, and this, this, you know, it is a cry not in my backyard, but, you know, we're, we're here to fight that it doesn't go in. Aesthetically, it's, it would really be bad. It's a ninety degree turn where that tower is, so you're not only looking at it coming up the mountain, but as you turn, you're looking at it. And I questioned the opening statement, it says it's, it's to extend service on Highway sixteen, isn't that Weddington Road?
It's nowhere near our house, Hale Mountain Road.
Right, but was that misleading to the board?
Not if you know your geography and didn't listen to me.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because the next statement is talking about Hale Mountain.
Yeah.
But the opening statement is that it's, it's for a nine-one-one system off of Highway sixteen, so the opening statement really has nothing to do with where the tower's going. So I just wanted to make sure-
What it's servicing.
And also, it says that certified letters were sent in September to us. Well, last week's when we got ours.
Yeah.
You know, we said, you said they're mailed out in November.
And that's been-
But it's written in here that we got them in September and nobody objected.
We just got them last week, so-
And it was just last week that, that everybody was sent out. So if there was some from September, I'd like it to be produced that, you know, we didn't get it. But aesthetics is our main thing. I think it would hurt property resale. I know, I don't think those street views did justice for where this actually is going to go, this three hundred and twenty foot steel giant, but it's going to be part of our lives, you know, if we live there till we die, you're going to see it twenty-four seven.
And I'm home all day, I homeschool our children, they're four each kids, so they're outside with their animals all day and things like that, and that's going to be what they see all day long. Because, like you said, our property backs up to that, and even though we have trees, you'll still see three hundred and twenty feet, so it is a-
There's just so many better locations, we feel, you know, fine, if you need to get one on Hale Mountain, there's so many rural areas that houses aren't even close to. So I just wonder if Smith Communications did their due diligence. What other lots did they propose to look at? You know, what, how did they, you know, pick this one? Was it the first door they knocked on? Because, you know, if you look at the top of Hale Mountain, it's flat, very flat, plenty of other parcels they could have put it on.
And larger, where there's not, large parcels next to each other, so we, we would like it to stay agricultural and not be approved to go there, it's so close to so many homes.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Does, uh, go back more?
Yeah.
This one, okay.
Hello, I'm James Michael Hutchins, you can go by Mike. Uh, I'm the property due west of there, borders this property. The cell tower, the, where they want to locate that's pretty much square behind my place. If I sit on my back porch, that's what I'm going to be seeing. And, you know, I'm from the Lincoln area, born and raised in the Lincoln area, and we always wanted to build a house in Morrow, on Hale Mountain. And that's the piece of land we bought sixteen years ago, and it was for the view, I mean the view. It's a nice piece of land, beautiful view. And I thought, well, there's nobody can ever build behind my house because it drops off in the holler. Well, there's going to be a three hundred and twenty foot cell tower going up if we don't do something about it. And, you know, God forbid if we ever did have to sell the place, I think that's going to kill our property values. I mean, some people say it well, some people say it wrong, but, I mean, if you go up there, you're up there for a different reason, and that's for the scenery and the views. And, um, I'm, I'm kind of like the Skogans, I don't understand it, because it's such a little tight knit area there, there's plenty of ha, there's lots of houses, there's big acreages up there, there's plenty of people be willing to take it. You know, I just do not understand why it's going right there. And I've wondered about the letters, because, you know, I even talked to the property owners after I received that letter and asked them what was going on. And, you know, they were saying, well, we're looking for the nine-one-one, we need the coverage in this area. And it was misleading, the letter was very misleading, because I thought it was a nine-one-one deal also. I mean, I called Willie Lemming and talked to him, he said, well, we need the nine-one-one. And it's not even, that's not even a for sure deal. I mean, it's not even, not even, there's nothing there. I mean, AT, AT&T wasn't even aware of the tower. So that was kind of concerning. So I think, I mean, to me, it's, there was stuff set out there, but it was very misleading. You know, because a nine-one-one coverage, if that's where it has to go, that's where it was pinned, I thought, well, because I know it is on a grid system, but that's not what it is. So that's my spiel, I just, I don't understand it, and I wish y'all would take into consideration what it's going to do to us. You know, that we spent lots of time outside, lots of time on our porch, cooking, family gatherings, and frankly, if that thing goes up, I mean, that's, that's over for me, I don't want to look at it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins.
Appreciate y'all's time.
Anyone else, is there a representative, the proponent, want to address some of that?
Kayla Kramer with Smith Communications. First, I do want to clarify, this is for a nine-one-one service tower first. Smith Communications has a longstanding relationship with Washington County, providing towers for their services, and this is an expansion of that service. AT&T is definitely looking in that area to expand their, um, their service too for the first net service, and we are in contact with the AT&T site acquisition team to try to pull that tower, so you don't have two towers in the same location. We want to be the sole tower. Second, this part of the zoning hearing is actually governed by federal law, not local law. It, it supports local law to a certain degree, but there are many items that cannot be considered when you're making a determination on this. Applications for construction of a telecom facility can be not, can be denied only when the denial is based on substantial evidence. The following items are not substantial evidence: lay opinion, unsupported opinion, generalized expressions of concerns with aesthetics, claims the towers unsightly, tower is unsightly, are generalized expressions of aesthetic concerns, and the same objection could not be made to any, could be made by any resident in any area in which a tower is placed. Pushing the tower to another location to give another person the same claim that it's ugly in their backyard is probably not a good idea. Are there any questions? I mean-
Yeah, I think there was concerns addressed about, you know, why this particular location? Do you want to address that at all?
Um, well, yes. The owner of the company has driven around with the nine-one-one director, and they've, he's told us pretty much where to go. We did actually look below that mountaintop to begin with, and that's how we ran into the AT&T people, and we were both trying to work the same landowner, and that kind of fell through. She wouldn't work with us, either one of us, she tried to play us against ourselves. So when we talked to the nine-one-one landowner, or nine-one-one director, he said, go up on the mountain, that has a better coverage area. And, um, that particular spot fills the hole that the nine-one-one needs, and we also know that that fits with AT&T's footprint.
So other questions, the board, sorry, I jumped in here with that one, is there anything?
Um, yes, it's the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six.
No, sir, we look at county ordinances.
All right, any other discussion? Thank you very much. All right, we'll close the public comment time, I think everybody had their chance to speak and look to the board for what would be your-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Morrow Wireless Communications Facility CUP as presented.
You have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, kind of a tie there, so Joel was more vocal, yeah. Any other discussion, questions? Ready to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If it passes, thank you very much. King's Ransom RV Park.
Thank you. The King's Ransom RV Park Conditional Use Permit request is for a property located in the northeast corner of the county near Beaver Lake. Accessed from Nob Hill Loop off Highway four twelve, just east of Beaver Lake. The four parcels total approximately one hundred and twenty-seven acres and are currently used as agricultural properties, and this CUP request is proposing to develop approximately twenty point six acres into a one hundred and eleven space RV park. Amenities include check-in area with property management office building, clubhouse with laundry and store, swimming pool, paved streets, a hammerhead turnaround at the farthest interior point of the development, and views of Beaver Lake. When you zoom into the site plan a little closer, you can see the two proposed buildings in green, one up top here, and then one down at the bottom. And the sixteen septic systems shown in yellow. The septic systems will be designed to support the one hundred and eleven RVs, the check-in office building and the clubhouse, which will also hold a laundry facility. This zoomed in portion of the plan shows where the access drive will connect to Nob Hill Loop and where it will cross one of the many gullies on the property. The initial submission of the project included preliminary large-scale development plans, and at the technical review stage of review, the county contract engineer provided comments and requests for additional information. However, the scheduling of the planning review cycle is such that the applicant didn't have time to address the entirety of the county engineer's comments, as well as, as the fire marshal's comments, and resubmit the plans in time, so they tabled the preliminary large-scale development request and proceeded with the CUP on its own. The applicant has not submitted plans to the Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Quality for their review yet, and it is the applicant's intent to secure CUP approval prior to submitting to these two agencies for review. Washington County's Future Land Use Plan shows this proposed development straddles the line at the edge of the low-density residential zone that allows for one to four residential units per acre and the area with no future land use designation. It is planning staff's determination that this request can be made compatible with the surrounding uses as long as it has been reviewed and found to be compliant with all utilities, health department, and Department of Environmental Quality. And this photo was submitted by the applicant as an example of the type of shipping container construction they wish to model for the clubhouse. And upon visiting the site, planning staff encountered overhead power lines. The height of the power lines themselves is questionable with regard to the clearance the RVs will require, and it may be that the height of the lines is adequate, but they, but they may need to be elevated. We just won't know until we get an elevation of the lines themselves where the proposed access road crosses, crosses beneath them, excuse me. The current use of the property is agricultural, and the land slopes in all directions. A full grading plan and drainage report were requested at technical review, but once the applicant tabled the large-scale request, the grading plan and drainage report were never submitted. Geographically, the property is divided into several sections by these narrow, deep gullies that convey stormwater runoff directly to the lake. No stormwater detention is proposed. Site distance to the north is more than adequate in this forty-five mile per hour speed zone, and site distance to the south is adequate as well. All neighbors within three hundred feet of the proposed development's exterior property boundary were notified by certified mail, as per county notification requirements. No comments were received from the neighbors, but Beaver Water District and Springdale Water Utility both returned comments in opposition to the project as submitted. Their opposition is based on the septic system's proximity to the lake, lack of stormwater detention, and the lack of submittal to Springdale Water to determine if they have the capacity to support the one hundred and eleven space RV park, clubhouse, and office. Due to the opposition and due to the, to the lack of the, the grading plan and the stormwater drainage report, staff recommends tabling the King's Ransom RV Park Conditional Use Permit at this time to give the applicant time to produce the site plans, grading plans, to more accurately reflect the request. A drainage report analyzing the proposed stormwater drainage strategy, and to submit plans for review by Arkansas Department of Health and the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, and produce a water system modeling report for Springdale Water Utility to review. However, if, uh, the board wishes to, to approve this project, we do have the conditions of approval, uh, ready as they were in the staff report. And I can take your questions anytime you like. The applicant is in attendance, as well as his engineers. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, hey Nathan, this, I think that's Blue Springs subdivision down there?
Yes.
Are those people right down there, are they not all on septic as well?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay.
I guess we should provide if the applicant wants to speak, or any opposition before we, yeah, go ahead.
My name is Larry Copas. I have property adjacent to the proposed, uh, RV park on the north side. I did not get a certified letter of notification, and I called Nathan, I was notified by neighbor of the project, and Nathan advised me, a letter was sent out, but my problem was with the post office. After reading the application letter, uh, one thing that come to my attention is that it was described as a high-end resort. I'm not really for sure what that means, high-end resort, I suppose, could be, mean different things to different people. Nathan calculated the density on the, on the proposed, uh, development park, and that come up to five point three units per acre. And, uh, that's quite a change from the existing zoning of one unit per acre. The way I understand it, the five point three units per acre is only on the twenty-seven acres that will be developed, but I would think if twenty-seven acres is developed, that that would open the door for additional development down the road across the entire acreage. My concerns with the project is that it's going to disrupt the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. I like living there, we have deer, uh, those big woodpeckers, uh, bobcats, and with that kind of density, I think I'll have an adverse effect on the wildlife. Another concern is my property is part of my nest egg for when I really get old. And I'm scared that this development could have an impact on my property values and decrease my, my value. After looking at the preliminary drawing, and I discussed this with Nathan, I know it's preliminary, there's a huge leach field, septic leach field, adjacent to my property on the north side. And I can understand the reason for putting it there, but at the same time, when the leach field fails, and all leach fields fail after twenty years or thirty years, that provides a direct shot on a steep grade to my property and to the lake. So in summary, I'm against this particular development. That's about all I have.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Diggins, I am actually just adjacent to Mr. Copas here in the property. I have many of the same concerns as he does with this existing property. Obviously, as you can tell, with the density that they're considering doing, the five point three, five point four units per acre, it's drastically more than what currently exists in the area. If you were to look at everywhere around us, we're all surrounded by woods, we all enjoyed this wildlife, the scenery that we have. If you were to take this area, cut down these woods, and then create a park of this nature in this tight little area, it's obviously going to have a very interesting effect on the ecological system there. But beyond that, what really affects me is the fact that we have such an issue further up with the septic systems in the subdivision, that I'm really curious and would really like to see and do the proper due diligence as far as what they plan on doing, sorry, excuse me, septic wise in this area, because whenever you have RVs and you have these systems, it's no longer just a normal, sorry, I'm choked up, uh, it's no longer just like a normal septic system. Considering this is going to be a high-end area where people are going to have residency, more so than just be passing through as RV people, um, it's a, sorry, how do you say it? It's more of a concentrated discharge that's coming from these campers versus like what would be on a normal house, because everything is low flow, so you have to really take that in consideration whenever you're building these systems. Beyond that, if you really look at the plans that are laid out, I don't know how much they've really done their due diligence, due diligence on these systems. Yes, it's been signed off by PE, but given that the watersheds are in this area, as well as what's flowing into the lake, and it being a reservoir, I think it's something that we should really consider before we approve this project. If you look at Mr. Copas, Mr. Copas's boundary on the side, that entire watershed feeds directly into the lake. It is constantly flowing year round. I've been down to the waterfall multiple times myself, being adjacent to this property, and so I'd really, once again, just like to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if we do table it, just to be aware, you're more likely to have to come back again if you want to have your views, because we'll have a, the environmental report, I assume, if we do table it, we'll get some of the answers you're asking, but we don't have them today. But, yes ma'am, I'm sorry, did you want to speak? Lady in the front?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. You have-
I, I didn't know if you were- Thank you, my name is Colleen Gaston, I'm the staff attorney for Beaver Water District. With me tonight is Cody Hudson, who's our environmental engineer. And I believe that you've each been given a letter that Beaver Water District's chief executive officer wrote in regard to this proposed, um, RV park and its request for a conditional use permit. Beaver Water District is the largest of four drinking water utilities whose source of raw water is Beaver Lake. And Beaver Water District provides, uh, drinking water to approximately three hundred and fifty-eight thousand people and industries in northwest Arkansas. This proposed development is, uh, less than twelve river miles upstream of our drinking water intakes on the lake, and as you've seen from the, uh, presentation, it is situated on a bluff line with a, uh, as little as we can tell from the proposal, sixteen septic systems, some of which are going to be situated, or appear to be situated on slopes of forty percent, uh, within a distance of, uh, two hundred or so feet to the lake, and, or within a, within a hundred and fifty feet or so of drainages that go directly to the lake. So as noted in our letter, and I'll kind of cut to the chase here, uh, we're opposed to the granting of the conditional use permit. Our legal basis for that is found in the criteria for granting a conditional use permit. We believe that based on the information before you at this time, that the proposed park is detrimental to the public health and general welfare, uh, by, because it will contribute to nutrients, sediment, and other pollution of the lake, we have no information to, to tell us otherwise. In addition, granting this conditional use permit would set a precedent, and we believe a, a, an unwise one for high-density development very close to the lake. And in proximity to drinking water utility intakes. Someone mentioned Blue Springs Village, and yes, that is in the vicinity, it's not adjacent. I, I don't know a lot about that development, other than, uh, I believe it was, began in the sixties, uh, before the current ordinances were in place. If you've been out there, uh, and, and each of those houses, uh, are, which are very close together, is, has a septic system. Some of those yards where I assume the septic system or place is located, uh, are often almost- are often almost all underwater during flood events. So we don't think that the fact that that subdivision occurred should be reason to repeat it in, in similar locations on the lake. Our calculations indicate that, that this RV park would essentially have the wastewater flow impact of 11, 111 one-bedroom residences, and that would amount to wastewater generation of over 15,000 gallons per day. Again, when there are questions about how that wastewater is going to be handled, this, there, there were not soil tests submitted, to my knowledge, with the application materials. I also believe that is one of the requirements, at least it's listed in online as one of the requirements for a CUP submittal, wasn't submitted. Also, a drainage statement is required. That was not, to my knowledge, submitted. These are all important issues. We don't believe that a conditional use permit should be granted, even if it is with conditions. There, there, this is, there are too many potential problems with this proposed development and its proximity to your drinking water source and the drinking water intakes to allow it to go forward based on the amount of information you have at this point. I don't believe that this is an appropriate situation to allow the CUP to precede or proceed prior to having the level of detail that you would have in a large-scale development submission. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Here, I got a couple of things. And Nathan, you'll have to help me on this too. River's Edge that we approved, septic systems, I'm assuming as well?
Yes, community septic system.
Okay.
One big system.
All right.
Started off as pump tanks.
And, and, and if my memory serves me right, when that was brought before us a couple of months ago, Beaver Water wasn't here. There wasn't a concern or a letter or anything in reference to that?
Not here to the planning board.
Okay, some, some, and, and this is going history with me. I sat on the Springdale Planning Commission for nine years. And I know at the time that they brought a residential project before there. They also looked at bringing a possible church development out there. And I know that Beaver Water had concerns on both of those. Why would there be concerns on both of those, but not on River's Edge? But then we have concerns down here on this one.
River's Edge changed strategies halfway through. They started off with tanks that they were going to be pumping.
Okay.
And then after approval, then they got, the, the health department told them that, well, you've got the acreage. We want you to have the traditional septic system with the lateral field. And so they switched over to that upon the health department's approval. And so you guys only heard that they were going to do pump tanks.
Okay.
And Nathan, I, I don't recall how many RV spaces there were for the River's.
Sixty-six.
So about half the number of RV spaces. Also, the location of those spaces is adjacent to the, the, the area of the land running on 412 essentially. It's a level piece of property at that point? Again, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but it's, the, the, the site for the RV pads is, is, is further away from the lake. I'm looking at you.
I'm thinking.
I think it's.
I would say that it's comparable.
Well, I think it fronts the road. What I've seen of it, it fronts the road, Highway 412. Fewer spaces, not a sloping of topography. What we were told was the wastewater was going to be taken off-site. In fact, this is an issue that we're looking at right now, and we may be back before you when that River's Edge development comes for final large-scale development approval, because it's our understanding that the health department requirements have not been met and the city of Springdale water requirements have not been met possibly, and also the fire marshal's requirement. So yes, we did at the time evaluate that. You know, we're always thinking, what are the potential uses for a particular property? And are some of them going to have more or less impact on the drinking water quality, on the water quality of the lake? And so based on what we knew at the time that originally came up, it was our decision not to oppose it. We're not opposed to development. We just want it to be thoughtful and to be protective of the drinking water quality of this region.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here that came prepared to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jason Apple with ESI, part of the design team. First of all, I just, I just wanted to kind of address some timing things and maybe some, some things that Nathan said in this, in his staff report. You know, I went, I went today to the county website, downloaded the staff report, everything looked in order. It was a recommendation for approval. My understanding, you know, we've been in this process for six weeks, going through the county process, went to technical committee, received comments, and we, we provided two documents. We provided the conditional use permit request and a large-scale development at that time. Based on comments received at the technical level, we decided to pull that large-scale. It had nothing to do with the timing of, of getting the engineering comments addressed. It was, it was solely because we didn't have, we didn't have the time to provide the ADQ approvals and from that weak turnaround. And so we're here just to ask for the conditional use permit, not the large-scale development at this point in time. And so there's significant investment from the developer for, for that request of information from Springdale Water, flow study, the ADQ analysis, the health department analysis, the soil samples. And so we're here just to, to try to give the developer an assurance that if we get the conditional use approved, that we can proceed with those documents and provide that information with the large scale so that we can satisfy all these comments. You know, we received the letter from Beaver Water District today at two or something. That's when I got it from Nathan and said that he would request us to, request a table or deny or whatever. So, you know, we, we, we will comply with the conditions. And if we've got to move the, the septic areas, if we've got to provide a different analysis of, of those areas, that, that analysis has not been completed because we, we just would like this request to be heard as a conditional use for the RV park. Obviously, you know, the River's Edge is, is directly adjacent to our parcels, which is an RV park. And so after, you know, hearing the presentation, and I mean, we, we understand the concerns, Beaver Water District, all parties involved. But I, we just can't provide you those answers until we can possibly have the conditional use approval. It's not approving anything other than allowing an RV park in, in this area. With, with no, you know, it's not giving us the approval to, to go build the thing. You know, it's just basically giving us the, the ability to give the developer an assurance that, you know, yeah, we can get it, we can get what you are asking for on this piece of property, so.
All right, thank you.
I'll turn to another question.
Anyone else?
Here I go, Jason, all you're asking for is approval on a CUP.
Right.
For your owner to be able to then go forward and spend the money he needs to spend in order to meet the criteria that you're being asked to meet.
Correct. Okay, any other? All right. Yeah, if you come to mine, I'm going to close it here in a second because you hesitated, so.
I just asked them if it was okay. I'm the developer. I'm not a developer, I'm just a poor guy trying to come up with a future for myself and my kids. And I drink out of Beaver Water too. I, I live in Springdale. I don't want to contaminate anything. And I do own the property to the south, so if the septic system is the big concern, we'll pump it over to my farm. I mean, there's a lot of options here, but like Jason said, I don't have $5 million sitting in the bank. I'm stretched to do this, and I don't want to go spend a bunch of money just to be denied. So that's the, the big thing for me, is just, is this a possibility? And when we went and met with Nathan, we, that was the first question, is there going to be a, you see any red flags before we move forward? Because engineers are expensive, the land's expensive, the work's expensive. And that's my stance. I'm all about saving the environment and doing the right thing. However, I'm also about making money and improving the community. And I think this will, that this will do that, so that's my two cents, just to let you know.
One more time, anybody else? We're done with the public comment then, and I'd look to the board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table King's Ransom RV Park, per the staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second, that it be tabled? I'm assuming till we get the appropriate material, you didn't state a time, but. Well, I'm asking, it would be your desire to.
Yeah.
If you got the material, your desire.
If we got the material, then at the next meeting, but you know, tomorrow's submittal day.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And so we might stagger a month, but we'll, we'll, we'll get with the applicant.
Just want to be clear. All right, so a motion and a discussion.
Okay, so if we're tabling it, we're going, he's going to have to go get all the, the criteria together, spend the money and everything in order to bring it back to us in order for us to be able to approve something?
I believe that, that we could get this to the point of recommending approval without the full, large-scale plan. But there are some things that we do need. We need to, to look at the possibility of detention or an alternative. We need to look at the possibility of moving the septic fields off that bluff where there's 40% slopes. You know, possibly looking out to see what ADQ and the health department have to say about it, rather than giving them a full submittal. Technical, as far as I know, technical review meeting was the only touch that the health department has had on this, this project. Is that accurate? Jason?
Well, we pulled the development plan, so.
Sure, sure. Has anything been submitted to DEQ or health department?
No, no, I mean, after that submittal, we, we just.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I just thought, I thought those submittals were associated with the large scale and not the CUP.
Right.
I mean, that, it made sense to me that, you know, it, I mean, we understand those, those are the requirements of the large scale.
Okay, but we came, we came to this point tonight, of them going through tech. It's showing that with that, we were, we were recommending approval, but we get a letter today, and now we, now we're recommended tabling.
It's been, been considered for, for a little while, that we don't feel comfortable approving the CUP. However, just a, a, a short thought on the difference in CUP and large scale. The CUP addresses the zoning, and large scale addresses the site elements themselves intuitively, yes. Septic and everything else would come through for large scale. However, based on these letters and based on our prior reservations, we weren't comfortable recommending approval without having, you know, some more of this information. And especially with 16 septic systems on that bluff, 200 feet from the lake, and no detention, and so on, so.
You know, I understand all that and I understand the environmental part of it, and I, and I want to be smart too.
No doubt.
But I also look at the thousands of people that spend every day on the lake for four months, four and a half months, and we know what they're doing. And I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following the heavy concern on this versus what we're putting in that lake, hanging out on boats and houseboats and things like that for four and a half months. I mean.
Not to regulate the boaters.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean.
To regulate land development.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. So anyway, that's all I could say.
Okay, any other comment? All right, the motion and second is to table, so a yes vote would be to table that? So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, I think it passes, so it'll be tabled.
Clarity, that's tabled to the next meeting, right, Nathan?
Tabled till we.
Tabled until they submit.
Well, the table, you, you got to have a defined table.
We'll table it to the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
It's January 26th, 7th, somewhere in there.
It's on the last slide.
It's too, it's too hard to get there.
All right, see to go for it.
Okay, oops.
Yes, sir.
All right, the Helmer conditional use permit request is located in the west side of the county, and it is not within any planning area. The subject parcel is located at the northeast corner of Weddington Blacktop and Civil Road. Here's a close-up of the property. The Helmers, the Helmers are seeking conditional use permit approval to allow their parcel of land to be split into two units that will each equal less than an acre. This parcel resides in an area where the zoning is agricultural and single-family residential uses of one unit per acre. The Helmers' property is currently surveyed at 1.58 acres. They would like to split the parcel into equal parts of 0.79 acres each. The proposed track one will retain the existing house. Proposed track two will be vacant. The applicant's property is in a very rural, heavily agricultural area, and this is a density map, and apologize for the very small print. The parcels in gray are acre, are parcels that are greater than 15 acres. The teal colors, which are kind of along the edges here, are parcels that are less than one acre. The light green is the one to two acres. The bright yellow is two to five acres, and the mustard or darker yellow represents parcels that are between five to 10 acres. The brownish ones are 10 to 15. The nearest parcels that are less than an acre in size vary from half a mile to just at about a mile away from the Helmers' property. So these are the properties to the east, and they're about half an acre each, and they're currently vacant. And this is the property that's to the west, this, this is the one that's about half a mile away. This one is about half an acre, and it's a kind of what we call a sliver, it's unbuildable. The nearest residences to the existing Helmer residence is between 212 feet and 601 feet, and these are estimates. They are to the northeast, south, and southwest. On November 27th, a total of seven letters were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the Helmers' property. To date, staff has received three comments, all in opposition. The opposing neighbors are concerned about density being less than one acre per residence. They worry about additional noise, pollution, traffic, unleashed pets injuring their own livestock and pets. They also worry about additional septic lines contaminating wells. They worry about new neighbors being unconscientious and burning trash, similar to what they're experiencing now with the current residents that live on the Helmers' land. Copies of these comments are in your update packet. The house in the foreground on the right side of the screen is the Helmer residence. The house in the background is the house that's on the east side, that's approximately 212 feet away. Kind of on the middle left. Kind of on the middle left, um, there's a red circle, and that's the survey marker boundary that, uh, is the corner between proposed track one and track two. This is Civil Road, um, proposed track two will not be utilizing it. And here's the site distance of Weddington Blacktop looking north and looking south. Overall, there was not much concern found during the site visit. Um, at this time, staff recommends approval of the Helmer conditional use permit with the following conditions, and these conditions have not changed since your staff report. Any questions?
Any questions, staff? Anyone here who wanted to speak to this?
Yes.
Absolutely, come forward and just. Move that chair there for you.
Uh, maybe, all right. Can y'all hear me okay? Um, I'm opposed to this splitting of this small acreage. My name is Hans Hurler, and we farm to the north and to the east of that set property. Let me just read what we wrote down earlier, makes it easier on me. While we respect the person's wish to do as they choose with their own property, the land is zoned for agriculture use by law, and we would prefer it to stay that way. We make a living with agriculture. Encroaching residential areas make our jobs more difficult and may lead to unnecessary conflict. There's plenty of residential land available closer to town in this area already. Farming is difficult enough as it is, and we would appreciate it if you did not add additional worries and concerns of very close neighbors interfering with our everyday operations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who came to speak to this one?
Hi, my name's Sarah Helmer, and we've owned the property since two thousand and six, and what we've found is the, it's just, it's never been used. That other lot was like a dumping ground when we inherited the property, when we bought the property, and we've got, you know, trash off there and everything, and we just paid a brush hog it so it doesn't grow fallow or turn into a fire hazard, and no one uses it. So our intent is to, you know, address some of the concerns and make it a better property and improve it by building a small, single-family home next door and, you know, hopefully have some nice neighbors, and we're in the process of improving the current house. And, you know, bring tax revenue of fifteen to two thousand of property taxes and maybe a small family home.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Have you, uh, thought about maybe buying additional acreage so that each one of those tracks would be one acre?
Uh, yeah, that didn't appear to be an option, and I, like, I was under the impression that it was, when we got into the survey, I was just gonna have the survey done, and then I realized it just sort of was a snowball effect of all of this started happening, I realized. It's, it's a learning process, but I thought that the point eight acres would be close enough, and the land perks, it's up on a nice hill, it has a great view. If you see the lot, I don't know if we can go back to. Left arrow. Let's see. Sorry. But you can see how the house is real far on this side and then that other lot, and that's all road, frontage road. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Tanya Hurler, and I know that property was used by the last renters. They had a horse and few other animals there. And everyone, and they're always wanting to rent some of our property, go with it. So I just can't understand why they would move out there and have hardly any yard. And, um, you know, because they're always wanting, coming to ask us if they can either use some of our property or rent it, and this would make it even smaller. So, and, you know, I mean, we've had trouble with their children coming on our property, and we have to make them get off. They were in our field, and we've got bulls, and that's very dangerous. And, uh, and I know that just with different people, but it's just gonna make this property smaller, and they're not gonna have hardly any yard or anything to go with it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Board have further questions or has a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Helmer CUP, or, well, I mean, yeah, that's what we're on.
Just the CUP, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. The Helmer minor subdivision?
All right, the Helmer minor subdivision request. Um, I'll go through this quickly, yet still do it justice. So there's the vicinity, here's the site. And the Helmers are seeking minor subdivision approval in order to split their parcel into two parcels where both tracks will be less than five acres each. The Helmers' property is surveyed at one point five eight acres, and they would like to split it into equal parts of zero point seven nine acres each. Tracked one, which is on the south, will retain the house, and track two is currently vacant. This proposed split does not meet any of their criteria in section eleven dash seven nine exemptions in order to be processed administratively. Again, this is a house in the foreground, on the right is the Helmer residence, um, and then that circle kind of left-ish middle is the survey marker boundary between proposed track one and track two. This is Civil Road, uh, proposed track two will not be utilizing this. This is, um, primarily for just track one. Um, this is Weddington Blacktop, and this is what the track two, um, property will be utilizing. This is the site distance looking north, and here's the site distance looking south. Um, staff did not find anything of concern while at the site visit. Um, once again, seven letters were mailed out. Staff received three comments, you, uh, those were in your update packets. At this time, staff would like to recommend approval of the, uh, Helmer minor subdivision, and I apologize, uh, for the typo here. Um, the conditions are the same as the conditional use permit. And these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff reports. Any questions?
Questions for staff? All right. Anyone additional want to speak, or? Okay. Look to the board for your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Helmer minor subdivision as presented.
Second. Okay, motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, thank you. Village Heights.
Okay, the Village Heights Minor Subdivision Request Project is located in the northeast portion of the county. It's kind of south of Highway twelve. Uh, the parcel is currently vacant. On November first, uh, two thousand and eighteen, the applicant, which is Volunteer Holdings, proposed a six-lot subdivision to the planning board. Despite obtaining approval, the applicant did not continue with the project. Due to preferences with current potential buyers, the applicant is now asking the board for a minor subdivision approval to split this twelve point nine four acre lot into four lots ranging from one point zero two acres to two point one nine acres. There are utilities existing in the area. Um, this is the entrance to Broadview, which is the residential drive the minor subdivision will utilize. And here's kind of the rest of the area. Site distance was very adequate, there were no concerns while at the site location. On November twenty-seventh, a total of twenty notifications were mailed to the surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the proposed project's boundary, and to date, uh, we only received two comments, both were in opposition of the project. There might be a few more, uh, that didn't make it, um, to the, uh, presentation portion, but it, it'll be in your, uh, update packet. The concerns state that drainage is a problem, um, and they state that they would prefer the property to remain vacant to allow wildlife to freely roam, and that additional houses would not be aesthetically as appealing as open space. Um, again, these comments are in your update packets. These parcels, uh, did receive soil analysis during the subdivision phase last year. Soil analysis was favorable for each lot. At this time, staff would like to recommend approval of the Village Heights Minor Subdivision Request with the following conditions, and these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Questions to staff, is anyone here who wanted to address it? The room's getting smaller and smaller, okay. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the Village Heights Minor Subdivision, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very much. White River Landing final.
Yeah.
That long last.
Some of us were here.
I figured it up the other.
Everybody else left.
Forty months.
Yeah.
We've had this for forty months.
Yeah.
Let's see. Hey. All right, the White River Landing Wedding and Event Center is located about mid-county in Greenland's planning area. It's located adjacent to the White River and takes access from County Road sixty-nine, Schaefer Road. It's located, uh, excuse me, there's a small amount of FEMA regulatory floodplain at the far west portion of the property. The applicant understands that any future development in that area of the property will require floodplain development permitting approval prior to beginning of construction. In October, the applicant split off the residential portion of the property from the commercial, leaving approximately five point nine acres for the White River Landing. And here we have the overall site plan, but I'll zoom in to the relevant portion of the property. And the site plan shows the venue, parking, fire lane, septic system, outdoor grilling area, volleyball area. And here we have the planting plan approved at CUP, and then again at preliminary large-scale development. However, December isn't the right time of year to be planting these types of plants, so a six-month reinspection of the vegetative buffer along the northern and eastern property line is required and is a condition of approval. This is the view upon arrival at the site, and the privacy fence is incomplete but is under construction. At this time of year, when a lot of deciduous foliage thins out, is a good time to look at how effective the existing buffer is. It will continue to grow in and then thin out, so the approved planting plan and privacy fence will help to mitigate the impact to the neighbor to the north. Approved CUP and preliminary large-scale plans show this grassy area to be planted with shrubs to help mitigate the impact to the neighbor to the east. Although it isn't planted yet, it will be. Uh, planning staff will conduct follow-up inspection of the vegetative buffer in this area in six months. Here's a photo of the south patio with overlooks the pond, it's very nice. The covered outdoor grilling area. And once overgrown with invasive vegetation, the applicant has cleaned up the property, leaving a majority of the mature trees in place. A condition of approval from CUP and large-scale, preliminary large-scale must still be completed, which involves placing physical barriers adjacent to the septic fields to prevent vehicles from damaging the lateral lines and protect the alternate, uh, lateral field from disturbance. As this is a condition of CUP and preliminary large-scale approval and is a condition of approval of this request for final review. Behind the bin, building are the individual exits from the bride and groom's dressing rooms. This area will also receive follow-up, excuse me, this area will also receive follow-up inspection of the vegetative buffer in six months. And staff recommends approval of the White River Landing final large-scale development permit with conditions. Conditions are based on what was approved at the CUP and preliminary phases of review, and this project requires a six-month reinspection of the vegetative buffer along the north and east property lines to ensure the planting plan has been implemented, and I can take your questions if you have any.
Questions to staff?
I would point out, I'm sorry, pardon me. I would point out that, you know, within the conditions of approval here, there are some things, uh, such as, uh, up in the northeast corner of the property, there was an ongoing condition for the applicant to keep that area clear. After speaking with the road department or chief staff, we determined that being within the right of way, that'd be on the road department, uh, to complete, as well as the striping, uh, that we required at CUP and large scale out at the end of Schaefer Road where it meets up to Highway seventy-one, it's a three-way intersection right there, state highway, two county roads. Uh, next time the road department overlays that, uh, those two roads, road department's gonna take care of those striping as well.
All right, anyone here who wanted to speak?
I'd like to. On the road department. We've helped up, improving this road all during this process, so that we wouldn't influence anybody. Now, I told them we're gonna go fix our road, we've been waiting forty minutes.
Getting kind of bouncy out there, chuckles, isn't it?
Is there a motion in the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the White River Landing final large-scale development finally with staff recommendation.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Congratulations. Yeah. You bet.
It did.
Looks good.
Nathan, any old business, or?
Uh, just briefly, wanted to mention that we presented, uh, some, some, uh, changes to the, uh, large-scale code to the County Services Committee the other night, and they were, um, of the opinion that they'd like to see the whole body of changes, uh, all at once, that way we can go through them line by line. And it'll take a little while to get it there, but just wanted to update you on what's, what's been happening. Uh, other than that, uh, we're going to, now that this is the final, uh, cycle of the year, we're gonna publish our new calendar and, uh, get that attached to all of our, uh, application packets. And so, next meeting, January twenty-third and February twenty-seventh. Thank you very much.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.